Check, check. Ready, Phil? Good evening, everyone. I will now call this City Council Regular Session for the City of Lake City on June 2nd to order if you will please stand with me for a pledge and invocation. Keep your heads. Lord Heavenly Father, thank you for another beautiful day in our beautiful city. Please guide our hands in leading our city with wisdom, logic, and compassion. Please keep our children safe as they enjoy their newfound summer and always keep your guidance and protection for our police, fire, first responders, troops, and veterans. Amen. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Jernigan.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Young.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
City Manager Rosenthal.
Here.
City Attorney Martin.
Here.
Chief Butler.
Here.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meeting. Since 1968, the city code has prohibited any person from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience constitutes boisterous conduct. Such conduct will not be tolerated. There is only one approved manner of addressing the city council, and that is to be recognized and to speak from the podium. As a reminder, persons are not to openly carry a handgun or carry concealed firearms or weapons during while the governing body is meeting. Failure to abide by the rules of decorum will result in removal from the meeting. We will now move on to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before we approve the agenda, I would ask if it's not inconvenient if we move item 10 to the front of the docket. I believe we have one citizen here for that. Perhaps save him an hour.
I'm fine with that. Is everybody else okay with that?
Item 10 is the park hours.
That's a hearing. Sound good?
Move to approve the agenda with that change in mind.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right. We don't have any proclamations or public participation, so we will now move on to approval or...
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda, approval of consent agenda, and then we'll move on to item number 10, so...
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan.
Yay.
Mayor Walker.
Yes. All right, now we'll move on to item number 10. So, this is deep in the agenda. And it is the City Council Ordinance Number 2025-2322 on Park Hours. Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you ordinance number 2025-2322 in ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending Chapter 86, Article 1, Section 86-2 of the City of Lake City Code of Ordinances concerning Park Hours, establishing Park Hours, providing definitions, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
All right, we will now open public comment on this item. Mr. George Hudson, you are our lone speaker.
Good evening. I'd like to thank council for pushing forward for designated times for the opening and closing of Camel Park at Lake Montgomery that is contained in this ordinance. As I've stated, designated times are needed because of the timed gates in the park so that visitors know when the gates would be opening and closing. This ordinance will add three more months to the current ordinance so that visitors will be able to enjoy the fishing pier and the lake during the longer daylight hours during daylight savings time. And these stated times will work well with daily sunrise and sunset during those months, along with the times for the other months that are on standard savings times. This will help ensure the continued safety and security of the visitors and the property owners on the lake, help the preservation of the park, and, more importantly, preservation of the lake for generations to come. There will always be those that complain about the gates and times, but again, those folks have not been involved in this project, and with no lighting in the park, this had to be done. And there will continue to be challenges with the park down the road, but they can be overcome. There are many more improvements to the park that could be made down the road, and I look forward to working with you if needed when they arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I don't have anybody else signed up for public comment, so we will close public comment now and move into council comment. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Ordinance 2025-2322.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Jernigan, you want to... You have something?
Yeah, I wanted to speak on that. Before we went into that, you had asked me to... You had asked if anybody had anything to say. I wanted to say, I just want to thank Mr. Hudson, because he's been involved in this for quite some time, and he's right there on the lake. I appreciate everything he has done to get this passed. Of course, this is Mr. Carter's district, so... But I just want to let you know how much I appreciate your involvement. And the chief coming up with these hours that, you know, nobody is going to agree with them. They may not agree or disagree or whatever, but at least we have some type of... We can move forward with some type of time there, okay? So, I get your text messages, and I get your phone calls, and we talk. Again, I know you've probably called Mr. Carter as well, and whoever else you call, but...
He called you too.
But I really appreciate your involvement, okay? So, don't think you... You know, things don't go unnoticed, because we don't say anything, but all of us, we really appreciate you, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. Anybody else? All right, I'll now entertain a motion to...
Where did that?
Okay, we got a motion. It's like, I'm sorry about that, folks. We've had discussion. No further discussion. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Walker.
Yes. All right. Moving back to item number four, and this is our open quasi-judicial hearing section. So, Mr. Martin, I will now turn it over to you to begin with City Council Ordinance Number 2025-2318.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have five items that are going to be considered tonight and voted on by the council in a quasi-judicial manner. Those are, as the mayor mentioned, ordinance 2025-2318, which is an ordinance amending future land use plan map pursuant to an application CPA 25-03 submitted by Carol Chadwick, his agent for TJL Associates LLC, the property owner. Also up on first reading, you have the companion ordinance 2025-2318, which is an ordinance amending the official zoning atlas pursuant to application Z 2504 submitted by Ms. Chadwick, his agent for TJL Associates, the property owner. Then you have an annexation ordinance 2025-2320 based on application ANX 2505, which is an ordinance considering an application for voluntary annexation submitted by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, followed by the second readings on ordinance 2025-2313 and 2025-2314, which are in sequence the future land use map change and companion zoning change for applications submitted by Jacob Creamer of Sterns Weaver Miller, his agent for Seacoast National Bank, formerly known as Drummond National Bank, the property owner. The purpose of tonight's procedure is to ensure an applicant provides a complete presentation of their request to the council prior to any testimony being provided by staff, so the applicant receives a full and fair hearing on their application, and any decision by the council is based on evidence presented. All testimony will be taken under oath, and everyone testifying will be subject to cross-examination. Documents and exhibits shall be entered into evidence. Giving of opinion testimony is limited to experts, and closing arguments will be limited to evidence of record. To accomplish this, the council will receive evidence in the following order: first presentations from the city, the applicant, and party interveners, followed by public comment from individuals and groups thereafter, cross-examination by the parties and interveners, and then any response in addition to that if the mayor deems it necessary to ensure fairness. Following that, the council can ask questions. Then we'll hear final arguments. I'll then advise the council as to the law and necessary findings. The council can then deliberate and vote. While the council welcomes comments from all persons with an interest in the proceeding, Florida law requires the council's decision in quasi-judicial actions to be supported by competent substantial evidence presented during the hearing. Competent substantial evidence is evidence a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support a conclusion. It must be based... The council's decision must be based on facts in the record, and there must be a factual basis in the record to support opinion testimony from expert and non-expert witnesses. At this time, I need to inquire of each council member individually if they have received any ex parte communications involving any of these matters, and if so, to disclose them. Starting at the end of the diocese, Councilwoman Young, have you had any ex parte communications on any of these matters?
Have not.
Councilwoman Carter?
No.
Councilwoman Jernigan?
No.
Councilwoman Harris?
No.
And Mr. Mayor?
No.
Okay. This time, if each person who's going to offer testimony on any of these five applications could stand and raise your right hands to take an oath. Do you each swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in each of these hearings?
Yes.
Thank you. Council members, before you first, you have a proposed ordinance 2025-2318 on first reading, which states in ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the future land use plan map of the City of Lake City Comprehensive Plan as amended relating to an amendment to the future land use map of 50 or less acres of land pursuant to an application CPA 2503 submitted by Carol Chadwick, his agent for TJL Associates LLC, a Florida limited liability company, the property owner of said acreage, under amendment procedures established in sections 163.3161 through 163.3248 Florida statutes as amended, identifying said lands by the 2025 Columbia County Tax Parcel Identification Number 014S1602703014, providing for changing the future land use classification from residential medium or allowing up to eight dwelling units per acre to commercial of certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Lake City, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Mr. Angelo, could you please introduce, summarize, and present the city's analysis of this ordinance?
Yes, Ms. Barton. Mr. Mayor and City Council, this is 2025-2318. It's for CPA 25-03. It's a comp plan amendment. The comp plan amendment is to change the future land use from residential medium, which allows eight dwelling units per acre. This petition is requested to change the future land use on parcel number 02703-014 from residential medium to commercial. The parcel is surrounded on the west and on the north by property with a future land use designation of commercial, and on the east and the south by residential medium. The eastern and southern adjacent parcels are in the initial stages of petitioning for a land use action to commercial also. As you can see, the location of the parcel there to the right, kind of odd shape there in the center, and right below it is the residential medium. To the north is the commercial. And then over to the west of that is the commercial. Staff's recommendation is that this is compliant with the land development regulations and the comp plan, and we recommend that the city council approve ordinance number 25-2318. I don't have any further. And I would like to move my presentation and the application into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Angelo. Ms. Chadwick, on behalf of the applicant.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me here. We are requesting the future land use change for a specific purpose. We already have a site plan designed. It would be a personal training facility for elite gymnastics. Right now, they have a facility, but they need to grow more. Any questions for me? Do I need to put that into the record?
Your application's already been moved into the record.
Okay, good. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any party interveners present tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this? All right, seeing no one. Is there any cross-examination from the city, from the applicant, on anything presented? Are you waiving your closing arguments? All right, thank you. Council members, at this time, if you wanted to ask any questions, you could.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Martin.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the council's decision should be based only on evidence provided by sworn witnesses. In addition, the application may be adopted if it preserves the internal consistency of the city's comp plan, complies with applicable state law, and does not confer special privileges or rights on any person. This time, the council may discuss the application and adopt proposed ordinance 2025-2318 following an appropriate motion and second, as read by title only.
Does anybody have discussion or would like to adopt City Council Ordinance Number 2025-2318?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve Council Ordinance 2025-2318.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, guys. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Council members, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, absolutely.
Council members, you now have before you proposed ordinance 2025-2318, which on first reading, which states in ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Lake City Land Development Regulations as amended relating to rezoning of 10 or less contiguous acres of land pursuant to an application Z 2504 submitted by Carol Chadwick, his agent for TJL Associates LLC, a Florida limited liability company, the property owner of said acreage, identifying said lands by the 2025 Columbia County Tax Parcel Identification Number 014S1602703014, providing for rezoning from residential mobile home 3 or RMH 3 to commercial intensive or CI of said lands within the corporate limits of the City of Lake City, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Mr. Angelo, could you please introduce, summarize, and present the ordinance?
Yes. So, this is ordinance number 2025-2318, and it is for the rezoning, which is the companion ordinance for the one that we just heard. The parcel, same parcel, 02703-014, is currently zoned RMH 3, which is residential mobile home 3. They are looking to move that to a commercial intensive zoning district, which will mirror some of the properties to the north of that. The parcel is surrounded on the north by property which is zoned commercial intensive, and on the east and the south, and it is zoned RMH 3. And on the west, it does have a parcel right across from it that is industrial light and also commercial general. And the eastern and southern portions are in the initial stages of the rezoning also. And there you have a similar map showing the zoning designations, and then you have a little bit farther south there, you even have one that is commercial neighborhood. So, predominantly, most of this area is commercial. And the staff's recommendation is that it is compliant with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulation, so therefore, we are recommending to approve ordinance number 2025-2318. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Angelo. Ms. Chadwick, on behalf of the applicant.
As Mr. Angelo said, this is the companion to the item that you just heard for rezoning it to match the intended use of the property and a lot of the area there also. Any questions of me?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, assume the applicant and the city are waiving their right for cross-examination. There are no questions from council, I don't believe. Are the parties waiving closing comments? All right, thank you. This time, Mr. Mayor, the council's decision should be based only on evidence provided by sworn witnesses, and the council may consider the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board in those matters listed in Section 15.2.2 of the city's land development regulations. Following that, the city may discuss the application testimony and any findings of fact and adopt the proposed ordinance 2025-2318, as read by title only, following an appropriate motion and second.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Do we have any discussion or anyone wanting to make a motion to adopt City Council Ordinance Number 2025-2318?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt article number 2025-2318.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you both. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Ms. Young. Mr. Jernigan.
Yes.
Mayor Walker.
Yes. All right, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have before you ordinance 2025-2320 on first reading, which states in ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, pursuant to petition number ANX 2505 submitted by the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, relating to voluntary annexation, annexing certain real property located in Columbia County, Florida, which is reasonably compact and contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida, and to the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida, making certain findings of fact and support thereof, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Mr. Angelo, could you please introduce, summarize, and present the ordinance?
Yes, sir. All right, this is ordinance number 2025-2320. It's for annexation 25-05. And this petition is a request to annex parcel number 07479-001 into the city. This parcel is contiguous on one side to the city and is reasonably compact. The petition does meet all applicable statutory criteria for annexation. And there you have a picture of the parcel in question highlighted there, and then the city jurisdiction is to the south there. This is located just to the east and south of... Or east and west of the... I'm sorry, southwest of the Lake City Airport. And staff's recommendation is to approve ordinance number 2025-2320 on first reading. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Angelo.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant? Seeing no one. Is there anyone here from the public wishes to comment on this particular matter? Seeing no one. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Mr. Angelo, are you waiving closing arguments? All right, thank you. The decision of the council should be based only on evidence provided by sworn witnesses. The ordinance may be adopted if the property proposed to be annexed is contiguous to the current municipal boundary, if it is reasonably compact, and the voluntary annexation bears the signatures of owners of the property in the area proposed to be annexed and otherwise complies with state law. This time, the council may discuss the ordinance testimony and adopt proposed ordinance 2025-2320 by title only, following an appropriate motion and second.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any discussion? If not, would anybody like to make a motion to adopt the City Council Ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt ordinance 2025-2320.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you both. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan.
Yes.
Mayor Walker.
Yes. Mr. Martin.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you now have before you proposed ordinance 2025-2313 on first... Or I'm sorry, on second reading, which states in ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the future land use plan map of the City of Lake City Comprehensive Plan as amended relating to an amendment concerning 50 or less acres of land pursuant to an application CPA 2502 by Jacob T. Creamer of Sterns Weaver Miller, his agent for Seacoast National Bank, formerly known as Drummond National Bank, the property owner of said acreage, under the amendment procedures established in sections 163.3161 through 163.3248 Florida statutes as amended, provided for changing the future land use classification from county highway interchange to city commercial of certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Lake City, Florida, making findings of fact and support thereof, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Mr. Thomas, could you please introduce, summarize, and present the city's analysis of the proposed ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Stated, this is the second reading of ordinance 2025-2313, land use change for parcel. It was recently annexed into the city, and now we're making the land use and zoning changes. It's, as stated, to move from county highway interchange to city commercial, and it's surrounded on all sides by county highway interchange and city commercial designations. To refamiliarize the council with the location of the project, it's on the corner of Southwest County Road 250 2B and US 90, as you can see, surrounded on all areas by commercial and highway interchange. Staff finds petition in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan, land use, land development regulations. It was approved by the... Recommended for approval, rather, by the Planning and Zoning Board, and the city council approved on first reading. Therefore, staff recommends approval by the city council of ordinance 2025-2313 on... Mistake there, on second reading. And with that, I'd like to read the application and the presentation into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. See several folks here on behalf of the applicant tonight. Ms. Savino, are you going to present?
Good evening, Simone Savino, on behalf of Sterns Weaver Miller, on behalf of the applicant. We were not intending to present formally tonight, but we are available if there's any questions. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none. Assuming no cross-examination. Any questions from council?
No, sir.
Seeing none. Everybody waiving closing comments? All right, thank you. At this time, the council can deliberate on the matter. The decision of the council should be based only on evidence provided by sworn witnesses. In addition, the application may be adopted if it preserves internal consistency of the city's comprehensive plan, complies with applicable state laws, and does not confer special privileges or rights on any person. This time, the council may discuss the application and testimony, and following an appropriate motion and second to adopt ordinance 2025-2313, as read by title only, may vote on said ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Do we have any discussion or anyone would like to make a motion to adopt City Council Ordinance Number 2025-2313?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-2313.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan.
Yes.
Mayor Walker.
Yes. Mr. Martin, moving on to number eight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have before you proposed ordinance 2025-2314 on second reading, which states in ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Lake City Land Development Regulations as amended relating to the rezoning of less than 10 contiguous acres of land pursuant to an application Z 2502 by Jacob T. Creamer of Sterns Weaver Miller, his agent for Seacoast National Bank, formerly known as Drummond National Bank, the property owner of said acreage, providing for rezoning from county commercial highway interchange or CHI to city commercial highway interchange or also CHI of certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Lake City, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Mr. Thomas, if you could please introduce, summarize, and present the ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Again, this is ordinance 2025-2314, which is the companion rezoning of the parcel that you just heard for land use change. And recently annexed into the city. Process now is to go from a county zoning designation to the city zoning designation. They are changing from county commercial highway interchange to commercial highway interchange for the city, and it again is surrounded on all sides by the designation of county commercial highway interchange, as you can see on the map here. Staff does find it in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan, land development regulations, is recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Board, and passed on first reading at the last meeting, and therefore, staff recommends approval for the city... By the city council of ordinance 2025-2314 on second reading. With that, I'd like to read the application and the presentation into the record, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Ms. Savino is the applicant waiving presentation. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none. Assuming we're waiving cross-examination. Mr. Mayor, any questions from members of council?
I don't see any questions.
Thank you. Are the parties waiving closing comments? All right. The decision of council should be based only on evidence provided by sworn witnesses, and the council shall take into consideration the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board in those matters listed in Section 15.2.2 of the city's land development regulations. At this time, the council may discuss the application testimony and any findings of fact and adopt the proposed ordinance, following an appropriate motion and second to adopt ordinance 2025-2314, as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Do we have any discussion or would anybody like to make a motion to adopt City Council Ordinance Number 2025-2314?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-2314.
Second.
Thank you both. Do we have any other... Any further discussion? Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan.
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, now we are moving out of the quasi-judicial portion of our meeting. Everybody take a deep breath, including you, Mr. Martin. And we will move on to item number nine, which is city council ordinance number 2025-2317. And, Mr. Martin, before you take that deep breath, will you read that by title?
Thank you. Council members, you have before you on second reading, ordinance 2025-2317, an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, providing for the permanent closure, vacation, and abandonment of certain portions of northeast Bailey Street, northeast La Rose Street, and northeast Alfonso Levy Terrace, abutting real property owned by the Columbia County School District, pursuant to Section 86102 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lake City, in response to an intergovernmental request from the school district, making findings of fact and support thereof, authorizing the city to convey by quitclaim deed to the district all of the closed, vacated, and abandoned portions of northeast Bailey Street, northeast La Rose Street, and northeast Alfonso Levy Terrace, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this ordinance, an appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance 2025-2317 on second reading, as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Do we have any, we don't have anybody signed up for public comment on this, so do we have any discussion from the council? Or would anybody like to make a motion to adopt city council ordinance number 2025-2317 on final reading?
Mayor, I'd like. I'll make a motion to adopt 2025-2317. Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, now we're going to go over item number 10, since we already passed that. And we are on to resolutions and new business, and we are on item number 11, which is a city council resolution number 2025-080. This pertains to the air methods lease at the airport. Mr. Ed, I'll give you an opportunity. Do you want to say anything, or, okay, you don't, yeah, I have to, but, welcome me to, all right, very good. Would anybody, does anybody have any questions or discussion? Anybody like to make a motion to approve city council resolution number 2025-080?
I'll make the motion, approve 2025-080.
Second.
We have a motion. I heard it from Councilman Carter first. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve city council resolution number 2025-080. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, now we're moving on to item 12, city council resolution number 2025-085, and this is to a resolution accepting grant funding for the, grant funding expansion for the Steedley Field conversion. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Would like to make a motion to approve city council resolution number 2025-085?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve on resolution number 2025-085.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. And now we move on to city council resolution number 2025-086, which has to do with the potable water for the mega industrial park agreement with the county. We'll move right into discussion. We don't have anybody here for public comment, so would anybody like to make questions, comments from the dais?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve city council resolution 2025-086. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, and now we're going into, we're done with our resolutions. We're coming into department administration and comments by our charter officers, starting with you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Some time ago, we were asked to look into the women's club for repairs. The city estimated those repairs to be in excess of $500,000. Mr. Daniel Krapps felt that he could get it repaired for less than that. This engineer informed him that it would be $500,000 or more. So the only reasonable option that staff can think of is actually demolishing the structure. Staff awaits further instructions.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal? Do you have any other comments? Would anybody like to speak to that?
I actually went to, I met, was it Scott? Me and Scott went there, and we, I noticed some of the stuff that was going on in there, it needs to be demolished. But like I asked him, will there be certain parts of it that we're able to keep, to incorporate it into the new building?
We can, we can allow, we have to work with our, our building official. We can, under certain conditions to maintain safety, allow somebody to go in and get whatever ornaments or things that they want out of the structure, that have to be worked through, through Scott, to maintain safety.
Well, one of the things I pointed out to Scott was on the outside where they had the bricks with certain people's names on it. That is one of the major things that I'm talking about.
Okay.
If we can reserve those bricks, and they're not on the inside. But that fireplace, if, if we could get something off of that fireplace, I mean, that would be good.
It is beautiful.
We can coordinate with our building official and see what we can do.
I have, I have a question. Are we, what is the process that we have to go through? Is it a designated historic site, or does it have a historic designation and all, from the state or federal government?
I don't think it has a designated, a historical designation from the state or anything. I, I think, I think, well, I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
I, I would have to look and see. I, I don't recall seeing it on the list of historic structures of significance in our comp plan. I don't know if it's within the bounds of the historic district or not. I would have to look at a map and see.
Mr. Carter?
Just a quick question for Mr. Rosenthal. I, I saw we had a quote, five or $600,000 for the repairs. Have we gotten multiple quotes? Is this one quote? What kind, what has the process been like for getting that price? It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem exceedingly out of sorts, but is there?
Well, the, the city council member had initially looked at it, and our estimate with our engineer was a little over $500,000. Daniel Krapps thought that he could do it for less than that, and he had an engineer look at it, and I think his was closer to $600,000.
Yeah, that's crazy. I would think that as a council, we would, we're not taking any action on this tonight. It's just discussion. But come up, I would, I would want staff to bring us back recommended options on how to move forward with that building and what to do with the property. Does that sound good? Does that sound good to everybody else?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it might not be, it might not be a bad idea to even add a workshop to a future meeting, allow the public to come in. Because it's a, it's a real pickle for us. Obviously, our ownership of that building is somewhat odd to begin with. But I, I don't think it's necessarily fair to expect taxpayers to foot the bill to repair something with such a large bill on it. But, but I'd be, but I also have a lot of citizens, I think we all have, reach out and want us to try to find a way to fix it. And so I would invite them to, I would say we should have a workshop, invite them to come. Perhaps somebody's got an idea we haven't thought of.
Good wisdom.
Before we move forward with a major action.
I want it to be clear. So the city does not own it, or?
We do.
We do.
We do own it. My, my understanding is that the city does own it.
We do. We own it. It's just, it's an odd history. We own it. It was given to us for a reason, but we immediately leased it back to the organization that gave it to us for, I think, a dollar a year for 99 years. We own it for the sake of owning it, as a government entity, owning the building, for, for, it was, it was for some military stuff back in like the 20s or 30s, I think. So it's an odd thing. In reality, it's always been the women's club's building. But we own it for odd reasons, 100 years old.
So if we, if we own it, why are we leasing it, even if it is for a dollar?
For public, good. So these, these organizations use it for the use of our citizens, I would imagine, right? It's not just that. There's other folks that can use those buildings other than just the leasing, correct? Or could.
Well, right, if I may, Mayor, right now, the building is unsafe, trying to use it. It, it wouldn't make a great deal of financial sense for the city to spend $600,000 on, on a structure like that at this point. That makes sense.
So what, if I've heard, yes, ma'am, Ms. Young?
How much are we paying for these estimates on repairing that building? How much does it cost?
We have not made anything.
I like threes. I would like to ask for one more.
Okay. Yeah.
We can do that.
It's a good balance. But also, I think that a workshop is a good idea. Is everybody in, in agreement with that before one of our meetings? Mr. Jernigan?
Yes, I, I like that idea. However, I, I just don't want to see that building demolished. It's, it's served a lot of purposes in the past years. And I would like to see if we could save the building. I would like to see that. However, I would definitely like to hear all options before we decide to just demolish the building, you know? So that's important to, to a lot of elderly people in this community. So I would like to save it if we could, but if we cannot save that building, we have to do what we have to do.
Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. So we'll schedule a workshop in the future, and then we'll have options on a future agenda after that workshop.
And I'm just going to make a suggestion to you. Maybe perhaps you can get with Mr. Scott, and he can let you go in, and you can see for yourself, you know, why it needs to be, go ahead and get demolished.
We, we could definitely arrange that, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal. Any other comments, Mr. Rosenthal?
None.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
No comments from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Sykes?
No comments.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Vice Mary Young?
I'm good.
Thank you, Vice Mary Young. Councilman Jernigan?
I just got a quick, as, as I'm running downtown here, and I see this junkyard down here on the right, going right across the railroad track. Have we been working on that area to try to to clean up that area? It's an eyesore. I, I don't know if you guys noticed this or not, but it is definitely an eyesore to have a junkyard in the middle of downtown. And, and again, this is just my opinion. I just think that we, if we're going to clean up this town, and we got people coming in from everywhere, wanting to see all these different entities that we have, and we trying to get people in here for business purposes or whatever, I just think that that, that eyesore needs to go. If we can move it anywhere outside of Lake City, I just think it needs to go from downtown.
If I may, if I may respond?
Yes, you can.
Yes, it is an eyesore. And I have spoken with the administration to talk to them and find out what can we do to get them to do what they need to do. Even if they don't move it at this point, it needs to be cleaned up. And also, the railroad track, all the growth around the track. And I know how tough it is with, with CSX or the private entity who own that part of the track. And I know we can't just go over there and clean it off, but it looks really bad, and, but they are working on that.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Carter?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilwoman Harris?
No, sir.
Great. Now my final comment, I want to wish a congratulations and good luck to Mr. Thomas for accepting the director position for the city of Alachua and what he does here. And that's all I have tonight, so that is.
Mayor, if you, if you don't have to be last.
I do. I do have to be last. It's the privilege of the mayor, but please.
But do one more sentence after, after I do this. Remember, we do have the event coming up on June the 13th. Tonio Armani, and I spoke, got an update today from Ms. Terry, who's doing an outstanding job. She and First Street Music with the planning. So looking to be a really great event. Everybody come out. If you don't know how to line dance, maybe it'd be a good, it'd be a good practice night for you. I can't either. And also, hats off to Mr. Steve Brown. He left, didn't he?
No, he's here.
Okay, I see. My contact didn't work in that. But anyway, hats off to him and his crew who went out to the churches in District 10 and put out the, the walk.
Crosswalk.
Crosswalks. Thanks so much for that. That's, that's a good deal. It's really great. Dee Johnson, stop it. And also, I lost my train of thought, but thank you so much for that. And there, maybe one or two more churches that we're working, we're working on, so thanks so much.
Thank you, Vice Mary Young. Just to add on to that, the, that Friday night event on the 13th, there will be a spring market the next day, and, and I know that there's a canoe race on Lake DeSoto, too. So it'll be a great weekend downtown. Definitely show up, show out. It'll be a really good time.